This hearing will include Columbus City Council's Health and Human Services, Finance, and Workforce Development Committees. I am Councilmember Priscilla Tyson, President Pro Tem of City Council and Chair of the Committees. Before we begin, please be aware that this hearing is being recorded for rebroadcast on CTV, the Columbus Government Television Channel Three. The rebroadcast schedule is available at www.columbus.gov. Tonight's hearing is one in a series of bi-weekly committee hearings that I hold in order to review legislation and the committees that I chair. This includes Health and Human Services, Finance, and the Workforce Development Committees. The goal of the hearings is to promote transparency and provide an opportunity for city residents to learn and speak on legislation that impacts their lives. There will be, on occasion, when a committee is not covered because legislation is not always scheduled for each committee. The intent of each hearing is to review legislation that will be on City Council's agenda for the following two weeks. Tonight, we will hear information on legislation in the Health and Human Services and Finance Committees. The legislation covered will be on City Council's agenda either on September 26 or October the 3rd. This evening, we have several presenters. We will have a special presentation from Judge Grady Pettigrew concerning the African-American Male Wellness Walk. Judge Pettigrew is Chair of the Walk. We'll also have Department of Finance and Management, the Director Joe Lombardi, from Columbus Public Health, we'll have Assistant Health Commissioner Roger Clorin. Before bringing up Judge Pettigrew, I would like to share a few remarks about the African-American Male Wellness Walk. This event was initiated in 2004, has brought much needed attention to the poor health outcomes that African-American men experience. Considering the value of African-American Male Wellness Walk to our community, Council will be supporting the event by providing $10,000 in funding. I anticipate that legislation for this funding will be on Council's agenda on October the 3rd. I have attended the event in past years, and I know from firsthand experience that this is a family-centered event that attracts diverse community members. In addition, in 2015, the Columbus event provided over 6,000 screenings, and there were nearly 15,000 participants, which made the African-American Male Wellness Walk, Columbus, the largest health event for African-Americans in central Ohio. With that, I will now turn over to Judge Pettigrew. I know he has brought some guests with him that work closely with him on the African-American Male Wellness Walk. Judge Pettigrew, the floor is yours.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. First, thank you for having us here, and let me introduce Perry Gregory, who is kind of a utility person. He does all kinds of things with the Walk, and I think you've grown up with the Walk, is that right? And then Dr. Mark White, who is the Medical Director for the Walk here in Ohio. And both of them play very key roles in this entire activity. This year, on August 13th, we had the 12th Annual African-American Male Wellness Walk at Livingston Park, adjacent to Nationwide Children's Hospital. We're counting, and have been told, that we had 17,000 people at the Walk this year. Certainly, when we add that number to the Walk in the nine cities that it has actually grown to, you've mentioned 2004, well, since that time, it's grown. We're now in five cities in Ohio: Toledo, Youngstown, Cleveland, Cincinnati, and Columbus, the sort of home and head of the Walk. But the Walk is the second Saturday in August, and I say that because we run into conflicts, not only like yours, that people take vacations and leave the city in August, but the Walk has been that second Saturday and will continue. It's August 12, 2017. The Honorary Chair for this year, and will actually be serving again next year, is Attorney Alex Schumate, and he has brought a very important connection with Ohio State University, the Athletic Department, and the greater involvement of that university. I said "the" Ohio State University. In October of this year, we will have the data report, which will tell us how many health screenings and actually what the outcomes are. I gave you the data report from 2015, but you'll see how that's laid out. It'll be updated and in a little different format. But the principal reason for the Walk's existence is to impact health in the urban community. So that means that, at the Walk, it's African-American, but we have people of all kinds of ethnicities who participate. It's male, it's not limited to men. And certainly, this year, we saw two major increases. Number one was in the kids' area. It keeps growing by leaps and bounds each year, and we jokingly talked about the stroller count because we had so many parents who brought their young children to the Walk this year. In this entire process, anyone who's watching this and who'd like to get more information can go to our website at AAWalk.org, and included in what's available there is the video from last year. The video for this year hasn't been completed because the first thing is, the last Walk just took place on Saturday, the 17th, in New Orleans. And so, the video has not and won't be put together until all of that's available. We are pleased with not only the fact that the Walk has generated so much interest in the country, we are certainly pleased about it generating activity in the state, and quite frankly, Columbus ends up challenging these other cities. When these organizing meetings take place, that's one of the first things that happen. Well, why in the world would this come out of Columbus? What are they doing down there? Well, the record is very well-established. I mean, 12th Year says it's not a brand-new idea, it's just a good idea. The second thing is that, when we look at the Walk's activity, there are actually events that go on year-round, focusing on mental wellness. We had a huge mental wellness event this year. Financial wellness, the Fatherhood Summit is a major activity, and the 6th Annual Golf Tournament was under Perry Gregory's leadership, but it's signed on for the 7th Annual. So, on June 24 of 2017, a bigger and better golf tournament will be taking place. This year, one of the challenges and one of the things that the Walk and this entire initiative, this health initiative, will be addressing, is how to have a more direct and beneficial impact on the health of many of the men. This year, like so many other years, men left the Walk to go to the emergency room, left the Walk because of some urgent health issue. But what we want to do is not only help that individual, but to get to more of the men who come, who participate, and who are ready and willing to learn. So, we appreciate the support that the city has given so long. I should at least mention the tremendous involvement of Columbus Public Health. I think of departments, that's been the major one this year. But we get support from a lot of different areas or departments in the city. But Columbus Public Health has really taken a very, very lead position. They hosted our committee meetings throughout the year. They had a huge passion team, people who came out and worked, many nurses and other professionals who worked. So, that's a direct relationship. While we appreciate the support that your staff has given and the lot that we've gotten from City Council, we are really very much indebted to the support of the City of Columbus in very many branches that it has. So, we're here to thank you. If there are any questions, if there is anything that we can provide, let us know. We'll do that as quickly as possible. But thank you, thank you, thank you, and we're already working to get ready for next year.
Thank you, Judge Pettigrew, and Dr. White, and Perry Gregory, for your work and your leadership. Say thank you to John Gregory. I know he's not here, tell him I said hello. And just appreciate the work that you're doing in our community. Certainly, every April, we have our Minority Health Month presentation from the Department of, from the Public Health Department. And certainly, some of the areas that you're focused on through the Walk and throughout the year are areas that we had at our two-day hearing this past April. Certainly, the issue of diabetes in our community, obviously, the issues of access to health, which you know, I know that you're big proponents of making sure people have access to health. Another area that we are, and we're focusing on infant mortality, has been a big push on infant mortality. There's an area that I'm hoping that, through the Walk and as you do other work, that one area that gives me pause is the number of individuals of color, the young men, who are getting HIV and AIDS. The numbers are just increasing, and I don't know if people know that, but I'm hearing about it from our hearings. And so, any work or any information you can provide to me and this body around the issue of African-American men and HIV and AIDS, I would appreciate that.
Well, as a part of the Walk, we do have the STD, the Sexually Transmitted Disease, screenings, which include HIV and AIDS. We don't have the hundreds who actually are tested. That is a very sensitive issue as to why. But we do have people that are tested, and Columbus Public Health is very much involved in that, and in fact, directing that portion of our screenings. And to the extent that you get that report in April, we'll probably want an appendix or something to be attached to that because we do work very closely with that department, and we'd like to make sure that that information is forwarded to you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming down, and certainly, we'll be in contact to talk about this because I just know that the numbers are just increasing. And certainly, I think that people, since people believe that there are so many, there's medications that people can take to live healthier, to live longer lives. However, we have to educate our young people that certainly, that disease can be passed on to their children. I mean, there's a lot of other issues around this, and so, I just want to make sure that we, through the work, maybe working more closely with you. Public Health knows it's something that I care deeply about, and maybe that's something that we can have some conversations about, to reach that group of people. Because I also know the other work that you guys do with the young people, young men, that how are we educating them about this particular illness? So, thank you for coming down. I appreciate all the work you're doing in our community, you know, working to save lives, improve lives in the City of Columbus, and around the state of Ohio, and in the country. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you.
And I would just say something, I won't be long.
Go ahead, Perry.
I don't talk as much as my father, but I think the Walk has became a model across the country that is allowing Columbus to be a face. So, we appreciate the support that you guys are pushing to really stay behind this movement. We was in New Orleans last week, and, I mean, they was on fire. So, we wanted to come back and tell Columbus City Council, don't let New Orleans catch us.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. I now would transition legislation in the Finance Committee by asking our Finance Director Joe Lombardi to present his legislation. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, President Pro Tem Tyson. This evening, in the Department, or in the Finance Committee, we have Ordinance 2255-2016 and says to authorize the Finance and Management Director to renew and modify a contract with Conet Inc. for maintenance and service and repair of various elevators under the purview of our Facilities Management Division, the total amount of $410,000. $160,000 will be coming from the General Fund, while $250,000 will be coming out of the Construction Management Capital Fund. This ordinance seeks the authority of the second of four annual renewal provisions provided within the initial contract. The term of this contract, or this ordinance's extension, will be through July 31 of 2017. We do require some service on elevators to maintain the State of Ohio Elevator Operating Certificate, and this ordinance is also seeking some maintenance services on one of our elevators at the Central Safety Building, which is currently not operable, so we are going to get that operable. The other three are going to be part of a renovation to, as we call it, modernize the elevators as part of a capital project. So, some of the money on this ordinance will be used to get one of our elevators operational again in the Central Safety Building.
Thank you. And in the Central Safety Building, has that been a deterrent to people's movement in that building?
At this time, there really hasn't been any deterrent from people to get in and out, but certainly, you know, when you have an elevator down in a building that size with that many people going through, it can become problematic. So, we want to make sure that we get that elevator up and running as soon as we can. And actually, one of those elevators, we can use to transport prisoners who may be there for questioning, or suspects that are there for questioning. So, we want to make sure that we get an elevator so that those officers can utilize that elevator for that purpose. But we are making sure that the public and those folks that are there for questioning are not in the same elevators.
Okay. And so, I want you to make sure that hopefully, as you move forward, even though we have to renew the elevator maintenance contract, that we, as best we can, not to have elevators that are down, especially in that building.
That's true, and we are working on that, and that's part of the capital project that we want to modernize those elevators. I'm not sure how old the building is, but I do recall it being built. I was working downtown at the time when that was being built, and so, I believe those are the original elevators. So, we want to get them up in today's standards for elevators.
Thank you very much.
The next ordinance is 2281-2006. This is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to execute documents necessary to enter an lease agreement with Columbus Next Generation Corp. This is to lease office space at 1393 East Broad Street. This is our model neighborhoods building. Currently, that building houses the Near East Neighborhood Pride Center and several nonprofit corporations, as well as our Office of Diversity and Inclusion. Next Generation is a corporation that assists the city in identifying underutilized properties in core neighborhoods that have potential for redevelopment. And their current lease at their location, I believe, is on Long Street. The landlord is not going to renew that lease, and so, we have located some space at that 1393 East Broad for that corporation to be housed there. They will move in as soon as we can get all the mechanics of the lease and the lease payment done, but this ordinance is just to allow us to start working on that lease agreement with them.
Thank you. And so, the lease agreement, in terms of the square foot, is it $12 a square foot?
Yes.
And that's what everyone else in the building pays?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Will they be going on, I know that you said the Department of Diversity and Inclusion is there. I know that downstairs also is Neighborhood Pride, and is Kumba still in the building too?
I believe so, I believe so. And with the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, we are looking at a plan of maybe relocating them to our Jerry Hammond Center as soon as we have some studies done on the space availability over there.
I know this is only a lease for one year, so I'm just wondering, is it going to renew it every year, are they permanently being there, or is it just a temporary move?
That I cannot answer at this point, but my guess is it'll be a year-to-year lease.
All right. Thank you.
The next ordinance is 2292-2016. This is to authorize the Finance and Management Director to enter into a contract for the option to purchase vapor draw propane with Pricair Distribution, Inc., and to authorize the expenditure of $1 to establish the contract. This contract is a universal term contract, which is used primarily by the Recreation and Parks Department and Public Service, and this is to provide propane for our propane lawn mowers. Those are the two largest users of this contract. The estimated total is, on this contract, on an annual basis, is $30,000.
And Director, can you just talk a little bit about why Fleet will elect to use a propane-fueled vehicles and equipment rather than similar equipment that might use traditional gasoline?
Yeah. Propane runs cleaner, and it's cleaner for the environment, and it is actually cheaper than gasoline, and it does, and I believe there's been some reports that those pieces of equipment would last longer as well using the propane as opposed to gasoline.
Thank you.
The next ordinance is 2298-2016, to authorize the Director of Department of Finance to execute documents as approved by the city attorney, necessary to grant the Ohio Power Company, doing business as AEP, an electric utility service easement to provide electric to the city real property at 4252 Groves Road, excuse me. This facility is located directly across from our Fleet Management, and this allows an easement for AEP to have exclusive electricity abilities at that facility, once, as we're beginning to rehab that building, so this is an easement to allow them to provide the electricity to that building.
Thank you. You know, you've been here a long time. When you realize, I remember we purchased the building, there used to be, that was a warehouse, and of course, you know that, but it also had a, they had a track in that building where people did, you know, where you skate and kind of go up and come down, and anyways, in this particular building. So, had a lift, I should say. So, tell me about what's intended for this particular building.
That building will be housing some of our safety department, I believe, some of our fire, I'm trying to remember if it was the Fire Department, is going to be out there along with some of our 911 folks. So, that's going to be out there by our Fleet Management offices.
Do you know when this will be completed? The timeline?
The timeline is probably going to be in the early part of 2017. We have had some issues with some groundwater right now, but we are mitigating that issue, and we'll be able to move on as soon as we mitigate that.
Thank you very much.
The next ordinance is Ordinance 2300-2016, and this is to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a new lease contract with WIC Clinics, with SAMA Management Group, and Holt Road LLC, and authorize the expenditure of $208,456.80 from the Health Department grant funds for the payment of these six leases. The Columbus Health Department received a grant from the Ohio Department of Health to fund the Women, Infants, and Children WIC Program for a period of October 1, 2016, through September 30 of 2017. WIC is a supplemental nutrition program for women, infants, and children under the age of five years, and provides invaluable assistance to families during their children's period of growth and development. And this ordinance allows us to enter into two new leases for existing WIC locations, and pays for a total of six leases that we have. We have four others that City Council had previously approved the payment for those leases, or those lease agreements. So, this is the payment for all six of those locations.
Thank you. And I won't ask you the locations. I know later on, when Roger shares his legislation, there are some WIC funding out of his committee, and so, maybe he can also share the WIC locations, or how, if people want to utilize the WIC services, how they can do that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next ordinance is 2329-2016, and this is to authorize the Director of Department of Finance and Management to execute documents as approved by the city attorney, necessary to release and terminate the city's land restrictions on a real property located at 1018 Neal Avenue. This city previously conveyed to a gentleman by the name of Michael Orem, this property that is located at 1018 Neal Avenue. The properties were required as part of the Dennison Urban Renewal Project. The federal grant program required certain deed restrictions on the property to ensure that new property owners would fulfill certain commitments. This particular owner met all the property, all the requirements, and the city's deed restrictions are no longer necessary on this property. And so, we are releasing those restrictions so that that property then has clean title for sale.
Thank you.
Next ordinance is 2405-2016. Ordinance authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with the Solid Waste Authority of Central Ohio, better known as SWCO, for the purpose of issuing payment related to the joint renovation and construction of the Morse Road Eco Station. Total amount of the ordinance is $10,676.60. What occurred here is that the purchase order was established for this payment of this Morse Road Eco Station, and the monies that were remaining on that purchase order were inadvertently canceled. And so, we reached out to the city auditor and asked, how can we reappropriate that money? The city auditor suggested that an ordinance would be required, and so, this ordinance is asking the approval of City Council for us to allocate $10,676.60 back on to a PO so that we can finalize the payments that we owe for this project.
Thank you. And so, the station, when we first built it, boosted, I guess, the capacity of our refuse handled on daily basis from 1,000 tons per day, and it replaced a facility that was originally designed and built in the 1970s that handled up to 500 tons per day. So, this was excellent, that we were able to have a stronger capacity with this facility, and this, as you said, will complete our financial obligation to SWCO, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. The next two ordinances, 2411-2016 and 2412-2016, are being drafted, but should be on the Council agenda for the October 3 meeting. That's our anticipation. These will be, both of these ordinance will be for the refunding of previously issued bonds to achieve interest rate savings. We believe that Mr. Dorian is going to do some refunding of some bonds that have already been issued by the city, and so, we wanted to make sure that these ordinance were discussed this evening at the hearing because we believe that our anticipated date for that is going to be 10/3. It's going to be a quick turnaround on that refunding, but we will see as a city probably significant savings. I don't know what that number would be, but typically, Mr. Dorian, when he sees lower interest rates, he likes to do the refund, and usually, it's a million or two in savings, if not more.
All right. Well, I look forward to getting that legislation with the bond refunding, and certainly, just appreciate and give my sincerest appreciation to our auditor for his leadership, and always ensuring that, making sure that we are safe, on safe financial ground, but also, I'm confident that his management of our outstanding debt keeps us well-positioned to serve the residents of our city. So, each time we do refunding, we do save substantial dollars for our residents. So, look forward to that legislation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The final ordinance I have for this evening is 2413-2016. This is to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a three-year lease agreement with the Columbus Urban League for city-owned property located at 475 Elmwood Avenue. The Columbus Urban League heads up a very successful Head Start program, and they are housed at this location at 475 Elmwood Avenue. And the initial term of this lease will be for three years with an option for three one-year renewals, with the terms of the rent being the same if we so choose to continue to do that rental agreement with the Columbus Urban League. And this ordinance just allows us to enter into a three-year lease agreement with them at this time.
Thank you. And certainly, by the time we put the legislation on, it would be great to find out how many children are in their Head Start program. So, working between your team and my team to find that out. your team and my team to find that out, because certainly, if we were not approving this legislation, we'd have to find a new home for the Head Start program, and the children would have to, and that would affect our children and our families, so we would like to find out how many kids will be in that program. And again, you're saying, so, that's why I asked the question about the Next Gen, because you're saying this is a three-year lease, and with one-year options, and so, a Next Gen is a one-year lease.
Yeah, so, we're still working on the Next Gen, we are still working on that lease agreement with them. You know, Ann Kelly in my real estate office, she does a tremendous job when it comes to putting the city in good position with our leases and with our property, and she is currently working with the Next Gen folks to hash out the terms of that lease, and once we have a little bit better information for you, I will certainly let your office know what that is.
Thank you, Director. All right, our next presenter is going to be from the, from Public Health, and Mr. Roger Clorn. Roger, the floor is yours.
Good evening. We have ten pieces of legislation to present tonight. Our first ordinance is 2198-2016, and Columbus Public Health and the Columbus City Schools have collaborated for several years to offer quality public health services to the Columbus City Schools. Under this revenue contract, the Columbus City Schools will reimburse Public Health $10,000 for these services for the period August 7, 2016, through August 6, 2017. We work with City Schools to provide school-based immunization clinics, including flu, T-DAP, and menococcal vaccines. In 2015, we provided over 5,000 vaccinations in the schools.
Thank you, thank you for the partnership with Columbus Public, Columbus City Schools.
Our next two pieces of legislation relate to our Sexual Health Clinic Laboratory. Ordinance 2310 authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order for Columbus Public Health to purchase chlamydia and gonorrhea test kits in an amount not to exceed $80,000. This DNA probe test kit has higher sensitivity, specificity, and transportability characteristics that other types of available testing methods. Because Hologic GenProbe is the sole provider of this DNA test kit, which is the only FDA-approved test kit available in the United States, this purchase is being made in accordance with the sole source provisions of the City Code. In 2015, over 8,700 clients were served at our clinic at 240 Parsons Avenue, and over 5,500 tests were performed at community sites, and these supplies will allow us to perform these needed laboratory tests.
So, are you saying there have been 13,000 people altogether, or is it eighty, because you said 8,700 clients at your facility, is that right?
Yes, eighty-seven just at our facility, the 5,500 is the number of tests performed outside of our building. I'm not sure how many clients that is, but the number of tests performed outside of our building was 5,500.
Okay, thank you.
The second lab piece to this is ordinance 2311. It authorizes the Director of Finance and Management to establish a purchase order with Columbus Public Health to purchase HIV/AIDS test kits from BioPool USA, doing business as Trinity Biotech, in an amount not to exceed $10,000. The CDC recommends that this rapid HIV test be used to better ensure that all patients receive their results in a timely manner, because BioPool is the sole provider of the only FDA-approved rapid HIV test that gives us a turnaround in 10 minutes or less. This purchase is being made in accordance with the sole source provisions of the City Our next ordinance is 2318. Columbus Public Health was awarded a grant from the Ohio Commission on Minority Health. This ordinance is needed to accept and appropriate $52,650.33 in grant monies to fund the Minority Health Grant Program for the period July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. The Minority Health Grant Program enables Columbus Public Health to work to eliminate differences in health status between racial and ethnic minority and non-minority populations by providing leadership and guidance on best ways to address racial and ethnic health disparity, and specific health needs of racial and ethnic minority groups, including informing, educating, and empowering people concerning health issues. Anyone interested in learning more about the Minority Health Program can contact Ryan Johnson at (614) 645-7335.
Thank you, and certainly, those dollars are important. I know that other dollars through the Public Health Department are also being spent besides this $52,000, and this is just, helps us to be able to support the work of the program, and as you heard me say earlier, certainly focusing on just minority health issues in our community, and it's so much needed, it's a great department, and Ryan's doing a really great job, and being, in terms of outreach in the community, educating people in the community about the services that, that you guys have, also services in the community to be able to deal with some of the issues around minority health, so, just really appreciate the work. One thing, Roger, you didn't mention, too, if people, I'm just going to go back to this, on the two areas of the chlamydia and gonorrhea testing, as well as HIV test kits, if individuals want to come and get tested at the Health Department, how could they do that?
Well, they can come to 240 Parsons Avenue. We're open every day of the week. You could also go to columbus.gov for a specific hours within those days, and/or you could also call 311.
Thank you very much.
The next five pieces relate to our Women's Infant and Children's Grant Program, otherwise known as the WIC program. Ordinance 2353 allows Columbus Public Health to accept and appropriate $6,655,579 to fund the WIC program for the period October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2017. The primary objective of the WIC program is to provide nutritionally desirable food and nutrition education to pregnant and lactating women, infants, and children at nutritional risk in Franklin County who meet categorical income and nutritional risk requirements for eligibility. This year's award is 3% greater than the grant period ending September 30 of this year. In 2015, we had 172,680 WIC client visits, serving over 35,000 clients. And as you mentioned, if anyone is interested in our WIC services, they can call 311, they can also call (614) 645-7280, or go onto the web at columbus.gov.
Thank you, Roger, and certainly, by the time we're ready to put this on for the hearing, I'd, it'd be nice to be able to provide our residents where the WIC clinics happen to be within the city of, within the city of Columbus, and so that we can provide them with that information. Thank you.
Our next ordinance is 2359. As part of this WIC program, Columbus Public Health partners with Nationwide Children's Hospital. The grant budget authorized a contract with Nationwide Children's Hospital for $596,030 for the operation of six of their WIC clinics at their facilities. This contract is the same amount as last year.
Thank you.
Next is 2360. As we operate the WIC clinics, we have a need to provide language interpretation services with persons with limited English proficiency. This is the fourth year of a five-year contract, and the contract period is October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2017, for a contract amount not to exceed $32,000. This contract amount is $10,000 more than last year's contract due to increased usage.
Which is great, and it's great that we are providing those services, shows you the diversity of people in our community, and that we are making sure that we are meeting their needs, they can get the services that they need. Thank you.
Next is 2374. WIC utilizes security services at various WIC clinics. We have a security contract with Ohio Support Services for the main location at 230, excuse me, 240 Parsons Avenue for $360,000 for the period March 1, 2016, through February 28, 2017. This ordinance is needed to increase the main contract in the amount of $22,000 for the additional security services relating to the WIC program and their various sites. This is the, this $22,000 is the same amount as last year. Finally, relating to the WIC program, WIC leases space from three Primary One health locations. This lease and the lease payments are designed to reimburse Primary One Health for WIC's proportionate share of utilities such as water, electric, gas, trash, and janitorial expenses. These expenses through the lease shall not exceed $28,000 for the period October 1, 16, through September 30, 2017, and this is also for the same amount as last year. Our final piece of legislation tonight is ordinance 2372, and it relates to Equitas Health. Columbus Public Health has initiated a comprehensive harm reduction program to address heroin and opiate use in our community. Part of this effort includes making naloxone readily available to heroin and opiate users in order to save lives. Naloxone, also known as Narcan, reverses the effects of overdose for opiates such as heroin. To help this effort, CPAH wishes to continue its partnership with Equitas Health by providing for the procurement and distribution of naloxone and providing counseling services to users. This ordinance authorizes the appropriation of $10,000 to Columbus Public Health with, from the Public Safety Initiative Subfund of the city's general fund. It also, also authorizes the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Equitas Health to support this program, $10,000 from Columbus Public Health for a total of $20,000.
Thank you, and certainly, want to be very responsive to this community-wide issue. It's not only community-wide, it's statewide, it's a national issue of individuals who have addiction illness, and so, just appreciate the partnership with Equitas Health, and providing them with this $20,000 to help ensure that individuals who do have addiction illness, that if by chance there is an overdose, that they have this Narcan, to be able to bring them back from their overdose, and hopefully, get them into facilities so that they can have a healthy life. And it certainly is a challenge in our community right now, this is one way of dealing with individuals who have an immediate need, but certainly, there is a need for a more, a comprehensive plan to deal with this particular illness in our community. So, I appreciate the partnership, and certainly, the, an additional $10,000 coming from the Public Safety Initiative Subfund from here, and just so, so thank you very much, and for sharing this. I'm sure we'll have a little more discussion, I don't, we bring this to the floor, but I appreciate the partnership with Equitas and the individuals that they are serving. Thank you.
Thank you.
And so, I just, before I conclude tonight's hearing, I just want to say thank you to Roger, to Joe for presenting the legislation from your committees. I also want to say a special thank you to Judge Pettigrew, and to Perry Gregory, and to Dr. White, who are also in council chambers tonight. Again, this is an opportunity for our residents to just to learn and become engaged with the work on Columbus City Council. And so, again, I thank each of you for being here and presenting the legislation. I always want to thank my fellow council members and their staff, who really work hard each and every day to serve this community. And council chambers tonight, I want to thank Michael Kessler, who is our councils, who heads Council's Legislative Research Office. Thank you for being in chambers this evening. I want to thank Andrew Dwyer, I also want to thank Erin, who's in Cambridge, Erin Beck, who's in chambers this evening, who also staffs our team on Health and Human Services. Thank her for being here. Thank Matt Erickson, who was here, who staffs the Finance Committee. And I also want to always thank Nicole Harper and Carl Williams, who, these are all part of Team Tyson, everybody that I just mentioned, and certainly, they work really hard to ensure that residents and that contact our office, that they're getting the great service from our team, so, thank you. And lastly, well, before lastly, I want to thank always, the hard-working team of CTV, because if it weren't for them, we would not be able to provide these hearings to the residents of our community and show transparency. And then finally, I want to always thank the residents of Columbus, who make this the best place in the country to live, working to raise a family, so thank you, and goodnight. The hearing is adjourned.